Glad you have joined us tonight. Would you bow with me in a moment of prayer, please? We gather here tonight in service to the city of Nacogdoches. We are grateful to the many individuals who are employed by the city and to those citizens who volunteer in a variety of roles. As a council, make us honest stewards and may our work tonight be blessed with insight, understanding, and wisdom. Help us to represent all members of our community and to conduct ourselves in a spirit of cooperation in deliberating matters that will impact our city today and in the future. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting for February 5th, 2019, to order. We have not had anyone sign up for open forum this evening, okay? Then we will move to our items to be removed from the consent agenda. And if not, the chair would entertain a motion for approval of those items.
I'll make a motion when we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. For our regular agenda, agenda item number five is a public hearing. What will happen with that is, first of all, we will hear a presentation from our city planner, Mr. Manti, and then we will allow a public comment for the public hearing. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. Tonight, we are presenting to the council some amendments that we made to the mobile units' food ordinance. And a little background on that, I, so, most cities in Texas and the country all over, food trucks, it's becoming, or has become, one of the things that citizens enjoy a lot. There's been growth, and most research has shown that it has actually increased a lot of participation and has actually benefited most cities. So, Nacogdoches, as a progressive city, also has a food truck ordinance. Just last year alone, we had about five applications from food truck vendors, and this year alone, we already have two in the processing stage. We should be done with the inspections and everything by probably next week. Due to the fact that citizens have really had that interest in it, city staff thought it wise to sit down and reassess our ordinance to see how best we can amend this code to work well for the food truck vendors as well as businesses and for the citizens as a whole. In going through this amendment, we came out with four major changes that we believe that if approved, it would help food trucks to operate effectively, it will work well with other businesses, and in the long run, will be a beneficial use to the citizens of Nacogdoches. I will quickly go through the major changes. The first one will be an amendment to section 18-58, which has to do with the permit and application. And the amendment is to allow the city manager or designated to have the authority to regulate the hours of operation for mobile food units on city-owned properties. So, we do allow food trucks to operate on city-owned properties, but then there's always a possibility of having ten food trucks who want to operate at a specific point in time. So, we added this amendment to allow the city manager or designated to regulate the hours of operation. The reason for this would be to allow for the fair rotation of food trucks on city-owned properties. So, if we have a food truck that probably serves more breakfast, we'll give them a certain period of time to operate during the mornings, and then if someone does more of lunch, then we could also regulate their time. This is to ensure that there's a fair rotation of food trucks on city-owned properties. The major change we also looked at was to delete section 18.59B, which currently reads that mobile food units may not be located within 200 feet of the property line of an open and operating fixed location food establishment. So, currently with the food truck ordinance, if a food truck is located within 200 feet, that will not be allowed. Staff did a research, we looked at the city of Lufkin, we looked at the city of Longview, we did look at some other few cities, and we realized that they all, that they have this stipulation. We believe it's also a discrimination against food trucks. The reason being, if a local restaurant is located in a building, any other restaurant could go next door with no restriction to it. So then, why do we have this restriction for food trucks? The reason for this, once again, is to prevent discrimination against food trucks. And secondly, we believe that there have been legal challenges, not we believe, there are evidence to show that there are legal challenges to the constitutionality of the distance restriction, which have arisen in multiple states, including Texas. And I, when I'm done, I believe our city attorney will go over these, some of these legal challenges. So, basically, this is to allow food trucks to be located within any area, within the zones that they are allowed to be, without having any discrimination from them in terms of sitting near restaurants. Based on some research I did online, there's always the issue of competition between food trucks and restaurants, but we do believe that food trucks are not really permanent entities, and so they move around the city. So, we don't believe they are located at a fixed, they are located close to a restaurant would have a much impact to brick-and-mortar restaurant. At the same time, city staff is also aware of the fact that we do gain from brick-and-mortar restaurants, and we want them to function effectively without any hindrances. And so, we looked at both sides and tried to make sure that this ordinance does not have any impact on both sides. And we believe if this is approved, it will ensure that both food trucks and brick-and-mortar restaurants operate effectively and make the profit that they are both supposed to make. Took a picture somewhere with a restaurant on the right and food trucks. As you can see in the picture, they cohabitate well. If somebody decides to move, decides from home to go to a restaurant, normally, they have what they want to eat in mind. So, I believe having a food truck will not prevent some of these restaurant goers from saying, "We have seen a food truck, and so we don't want to eat in this restaurant again." We believe that is a myth, people always have their preferences before they leave home, and so, as you can see on here, they are cohabitating really well. I did go around to look at pictures, and this is a street view on North Street. It's not really legible, but you can see Cotton Patch, Dairy Queen, and the Peking Chinese Restaurant. They are located right next to each other. There's no issue of 200-foot separation between them. So then, the question here is, why do we want to put a 200 feet against food trucks if they want to locate close to a restaurant? Since other brick-and-mortar restaurants can easily locate next to each other without any issues. The third amendment will be to include snow cone vendors in our regulations. The current regulation does not include snow cone vendors. Several factors, I'm sure, was allocated to that, but we've come to realize that snow cone vendors, just like food trucks, some are big, some are small, but we thought that since they are all mobile food units, it would be conducive for us to also regulate them just like food trucks. So, this amendment, if approved, would allow the city to also put all the regulations on food trucks, on snow cone vendors as well. And the reason being is to allow snow cones to adhere to all city regulations. So, we are saying that food trucks would be equal to snow cones when this amendment is approved, they would all have the same regulations. Lastly, due to safety, in collaboration with our fire department, the amendment here would be, while cooking operations are being conducted, mobile food units shall be located at least 10 feet away from all habitable structures. This is very obvious, that is to promote safety and prevent loss to other properties in case of an accident. So, basically, this amendment is saying that if the food truck owner is cooking on-site, they have to be 10 feet minimum from any habitable structure. So, we've done all these amendments, and want to justify it, staff started when it came out, with the fact that if all these amendments are approved, it helps to prevent discrimination against food trucks. It provides a wider range for food trucks, thereby giving citizens increased choices in food. Additionally, legal challenges to the constitution, like I said earlier, and San Antonio and El Paso have been victims of such legal challenges. Thirdly, the amendment to prevent congestion of food trucks on city-owned properties, thereby ensuring orderly operation of food trucks. As I said in the first slide, this will give the city manager or the designated, I mean, the opportunity to change time on-site for these food trucks in order to prevent the issue where all of them will crowd on-site and, you know, to prevent any chaos. And then, lastly, the amendment to promote safety, health, and ensure that all food trucks, including snow cones, adhere to the ordinance requirements. I want to say once again that we did our research, looking at cities around us, and we realized that we're almost in line with all, with them in terms of regulation, except for the 200-foot regulation. And so, we would, staff would recommend that the city council really looks into this and approve this ordinance, taking into consideration the fact that we want to satisfy food truck owners, we want to satisfy restaurants, and the ultimate goal is to give citizens the choice to have different varieties in terms of the kind of food they want to eat. I will give our city attorney the opportunity to elaborate a little bit on the legal challenges to the constitution.
Thank you, Mr. Manti.
Mayor, council members, good evening. Jeff Davis, city attorney. Mr. Manti did a fantastic job. I don't have a whole lot to add at this time. I would just, very briefly, and try not to plow ground, Mr. Jeffers, but would point out that there have been some legal challenges, more than a few, that have popped up across the nation on this distance issue. I think they go as far east as Baltimore, they popped up, and as far west as California. And here in Texas, there have been several challenges, lawsuits that have been filed. Mr. Manti spoke about a lawsuit filed against the city of El Paso for a distance restriction as well as San Antonio. Those particular challenges have been based on the constitution, both the state and the U.S. Constitution. On the state constitution, the one challenge came under Article 1, Section 19 of the Texas Constitution. Another challenge came in actual federal court under the Fourteenth Amendment, due process matters, the other was due course of law. Based on those lawsuits, there were changes to do away with those distance restrictions to, I think, come more in compliance with police powers of regulating health, safety, morals, and welfare.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so now, we're going to have a public hearing, and so, just to reiterate, there are four amendments to this agenda item. So, if there are any of those of you that would like to speak against one or more of those amendments, would you please come forward? Name and address, please.
My name is Lou Vasquez. I live on 4891 One Road. Nacogdoches, Texas, 7596.
Yes, thank you.
Distinguished mayor, members of the council, I am here representing not so much the business aspect of the different businesses with Dolly, Dolly's Diner. I am here representing the employees. Now, I am, at the present time, I've been in Nacogdoches now for 10 years, and I've been an employee with Morning Glory for 10 years. And it's been nice to be able to come to Nacogdoches downtown and be it a nice, oldest town in Texas, right? That's what we are. This restaurant here, that one, and that one employ over 50 people, 50 Nacogdoches residents. I am the personal manager. As it stands right now, I have to let go five people. Business is down. I also have to cut away our advertisement with square, square advertising, square, just down that way. They were getting $900 a month from us. They're not getting $900 a month from us anymore. Business is down. Now, I don't know, the city planner, distinguished city planner, has put in thought the domino theory that happens when you start bringing in food trucks right next to businesses. Yes, we are into food trucks, yes. It's part of what's going on, it's part of what we're going to do. It's happening. That's where we're going. But somebody has to protect these people. The domino theory, you're going to have people that we, we, because I deal with the numbers, I deal with what we pay, we pay a lot of local businesses. Our beef comes from Garrison Hardware, Garrison Farms, Garrison Ranch. Our produce from the forestry market. It's going to go down. Our cleaning, it's also a local company. Most of our payments that I make, the checks I'll do, go to Nacogdoches. Domino theory is going to go down. Food truck, yes. Who are they paying? What taxes are they paying? Dolly, right now, got a loan, put $40,000 of her money, and then a loan for $80,000 from the local bank to continue the business downtown, right here, these brick streets. Where are they paying taxes? How much are they paying taxes? It's all about revenue. Totally understand. However, who is, who are they paying? Who are we paying? Who's protecting these people? Dolly buys her cars from that car dealer right across the street from us, Pepper's. He'll come over here and tell you that she buys her used cars from there. She pays the highest wages for service. The state minimum wage is $270 something for servers. She pays $5 an hour, and they get to keep their tips. Cooks get $8 an hour, $10 an hour, and $12 an hour. How do I know? Of course, I make the checks. That's above what all Cotton Patch, all these other ones, all these other businesses pay, because she knows what it's like to make a living, and how hard it is to make a living in a small town. This is our small town. Somebody has to protect these people. It's 50-plus, not counting the domino theory. Yes, trucks are coming. Progress. But does it have to be right there? Can we not put them somewhere where everybody can come from Nacogdoches? Where they have restroom facilities? Where they have power? Where they don't have to fight each other? I mean, down the street, we have a park we never use. Nobody's using it. There it is. We have another park down the street, down that way, nobody's using it. And yet, we have power, we have restrooms. Where's city planner? City planner says discrimination, restaurant, food truck. What is the difference between a restaurant and another restaurant next door? It's apples and oranges. I can come with my truck, because I had one in Caribbean, I had a Rojado cart. I can come with my Rojado cart, set it up. I'm not doing business. I'm going to pack up and go somewhere else. They don't have that option. They have invested more than $150,000 on one spot. They have to stay there. They can't pick up and go. All that money comes back, comes back to the brick streets. And, on the brick streets, since we're talking, 10 years I've been down there, for 10 years I've been getting letters that say, "Do not park on the streets because it hurts business." The other day, I came to work across the street, okay, I came to work across the street, and there were cones on the parking lot, on the parking spots. Since when does our government put cones for businesses? Since when? This is a public entity. I've been telling, I've been getting told that I can't park on the parking spots because it hurts business. All of a sudden, we got cones, and our government is doing it. Who is protecting those people? If they pick up and leave, 50-plus people are out of a job, myself included. I'm semi-retired. I'll be okay. Single mothers, men that cannot find a job anywhere else, they're working there, sweating their happy little tush off, passing out on breakfasts. Servers who are trying to get through college, they're all going to be out of a job. Apples and oranges between food trucks and brick-and-mortar. Somebody has to protect the brick-and-mortar, somebody has to protect those people. I am here, and I'm winning it because I was just teaching across the street, but I feel it. I feel it. When I have to tell somebody, "I cannot give you any more hours. We're not making the money. I cannot give you any more hours." "Lou, I need money, I need, can I give you some more hours?" 10 hours is all you get. And then, I apologize, but you have to go. Most of your business owners know how hard that is to say to somebody, to somebody for no reason, they were good workers, they kicked butt, and I have to tell them, "We're not making the money. I apologize, you don't have a job." Somebody has to protect those people, let me see, you don't? Like I said, I'm semi-retired, and I'll go back to my three acres. 50 people won't. And it's our government that protects them. It's all I can say.
Thank you, Mr. Vasquez. Yes, good evening, Mr. Guireman.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Guireman. My address is 1509 Shelton Drive. My wife and I are the owner, operators of Dolly's Diner, the Old Town General Store, and the newly-opened Cowboy Jack's. I just wanted to say that we, I'm not just representing one voice, but I'm representing three voices. I guess, first of all, I'd just like to say that most of y'all will acknowledge that we're professional and expert in the field that we operate in, and we honestly looked into doing this ourselves a number of years ago. When we did, we looked into what the Texas regulations are for food trucks, and we realized that there isn't a way to operate in this county and be compliant, because there is no commissary whatsoever. And so, we decided that it wasn't going to be feasible for us to do it, because there's no way to be compliant with all the regulations that you need to be here in this county, and actually, a number of counties adjacent to here. Anyway, the biggest issue that I have is, what are we doing and what's the enforcement about the people's waste, like grease traps and all the same regulations that we have to follow as far as trash receptacles, what's happening to used oil, all those kind of things? I've got to have a viable way to take care of all that stuff, and I don't know that that's being done. I don't know who's enforcing it, if they are. Who's enforcing the state regulations here in this county? I believe that's our responsibility. When you go back to the 200-foot ordinance, what I want to ask is, why was it put in place at first? Why did we decide that this ordinance was necessary in the first place? What was the reasoning behind that? And what ordinance, if any, did it replace? I understand the necessity, or understand the push behind removing it, but I don't understand what the urgency behind it is. I think it needs to be looked into a little bit more. As far as potential lawsuits, I don't know when we started operating on potential and not actual. The cities that lost these lawsuits, what was the damages? What had to happen with them? And I can't imagine that 100% of the cities that had these lawsuits, lost them. So, I think that we need to do some research into the cities that won these lawsuits, what they did to do that, how they were able to figure that out. That's pretty much all that I had, was questions that maybe need to be answered. And I did have a letter from my wife. She had to go to the high school this evening to register our youngest for classes at the high school, and felt like that it was important to do something with the family. She had to make sacrifice and wanted to go ahead and do that. And so, she just wanted me to read the address also, 1509 Shelton Street. "Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This letter is on behalf of Dolly Guireman, the owner of Old Town General Store, Dolly's Diner, and Cowboy Jack's, all of which are operated here in downtown Nacogdoches. She's asked me to read this in her absence. Her priority, her family obligation, as a mother tonight, enrolling our daughter in NISD. High school was something we decided as a family was important not to miss. We felt as a family that she sacrificed enough for her business, and she needed not to miss a pivotal moment with our daughter." And she wanted me to say that her name is Dolly Guireman, resident of Nacogdoches, concerned with the issue at hand involving amendments to the city ordinance for mobile food units, which are on the books currently. There's a parking issue downtown, a lack of parking downtown, not only provide parking for those mobile units, but to cone them off and reserve parking place for them has resulted in a parking congestion that will only grow when more are allowed to park at will. Allowing the mobile units to park, I'm sorry, park illegally in an already crowded space is not only a parking issue, but now it's a safety issue. We believe as business owners, we work diligently to uphold the historical integrity of our downtown. By allowing mobile food units to inhabit the historical downtown blocks is a direct contradiction of what we are told we can and cannot do to our, you know, outsides of our brick-and-mortar establishments. I feel that the priority needs to be reevaluated, look at the multitude of vacant and almost condemned buildings in our historic downtown, in our historic downtown, to fill these buildings like what we've done. Bring life and businesses permanently downtown instead of putting focus on temporary draw businesses that could ultimately lead to demise of existing brick-and-mortar establishments. You know, where do we see the long-term benefit of these mobile food units going? And what is the outcome we're hoping to achieve? My family and I have made a choice to bring permanent businesses downtown. Seven days a week, we are downtown here, filling a need for this community. Okay, we've invested time and money, seven days a week, to bring life and vibrance to these downtown historic streets of Nacogdoches, and put our faith in the city government to protect not only our investments, but our best interests as well. To help the city and those of these mobile food units, you may want to take a look at how other cities deal with the codes and regulations that go with the responsibilities in owning and operating them. Building up the parks with restrooms and electrical needs for them is one of the ways to have a safe and profitable spot for everyone. Utilizing city property, i.e. the library or the hitchlot, is also a conducive location. As a business owner of three local, family-operated downtown restaurants, I urge all of you to get informed, if you are not already, before making a decision that could negatively affect not only my businesses, but the businesses of others downtown as well. And thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Guireman. Anyone else want to speak against?
My name is Jim Wallace. I live at 3209 Lake Forest Drive, Nacogdoches, Texas. My daughter's Dolly, so, even if this is the reason I'm here. The reason they're here in Nacogdoches is because of me. I worked for Tyson for 36 years as a manager, and I have, I was in Tennessee about 25 years ago, and Tyson sent me down here, and I never left. So, I've been there a long time. I told them about it, they were up in Idaho doing things. I said, "Hey, come down here, you guys will like this." And they've come down, and they fell in love with Nacogdoches, too. And that brings me to the point, the place that they first started off was the old Yacherfitzes. Remember the old Yacherfitzes down there? So, and, you know, we, when she started that place, and I'll be honest with you, I said, "What in the hell are you doing? There is no business downtown." There's no business downtown. At that time, I think, I think Shelly, you're about to own one downtown, but there was nobody, it was dead. So, I'm not saying that's bad or that's good, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a struggle. And they're gonna put their money in, it's a hard struggle to be. But, what I really liked about this place and what they like about it, and they voiced their opinion on what I said, I won't repeat myself on what they said, but is the historical part. You know, I always thought this was a historical town. Now, I've, I had a little bit of experience, I was in Arizona for a while and they have Scottsdale, Arizona, it's very similar to this, very similar rules. And the city council there and the people in Scottsdale, they promote a lot of stuff. I hate to say it, but this bunch up here, the promotion is very far and few between. And these people put a ton of money into this place, they don't know guarantees, but it's, put the money in, the tax money goes to you people. And you people in return, you know, they checked out the rules, they had two hundred foot rule and all these other things that have, why the change? This is my thing, you know, somebody was sure a lot smarter than all of us here, a long time ago, put the two hundred foot rule in, that eliminated everything. But for some reason, someone's got this, this trend that they call food trucks. And I don't think a trendy food truck, just because Austin does it, the Nacogdoches, the oldest town in Texas should do it. I, I find it appalling that when I come down here, I'm from a big city, I'm from California, so I can tell you about food trucks. And I see a food truck pull into an area, that's the first thing of decay. This, if you start getting criminal activity, you start getting rushed people, people don't care. And they can say what they want, how fancy you wanna make them, they're still, as I used to say in California, they're roach coaches. They don't have any control on sanitation, they have no control on waste, they have a ton of problems. Now, they won't tell you that at first when they give them a hundred dollar permit, but they cut corners. I've seen it, I know how they do it, and it's, it's appalling. They wanted to come over here, I wanted to get an attorney and see what my legal rights were, our legal rights for these businesses, and then approach you from a legal standpoint. Because you guys are worried about someone suing, I think it's, I think it's, again, it's, it's, it's just wrong that people could come in, invest two hundred thousand dollars, and you let these people come in, roll in, roll out. And I tell you how crazy it gets, these kids bought a six hundred dollar antique sign. Boy, it's from nineteen fifty's and it was old flashy sign diner, you know? And the city planning people here, whoever's in charge of the sign says, nope, can't do that. And I said, why that? Well, it's doesn't, it doesn't go on, it's on the outside, gotta be inside, okay, but, no, 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 no. And Brian, Brian was one of them, your historical people. But anyways, the resistance to putting something in historical is through the sign committee. Well, how in the hell does an Indian food truck selling barbecue pull up with a seven foot sign in the parking lot, ten foot from your door? Where's the, where's the permits for that? Where, where's the restrictions for that? You know, I'm just asking to be fair, I mean, you know, you got, uh, ten foot from your door is not very far. If they can put a, a Indian food truck, well, then I would say, where's the permit for the sign? Then in other words, if you're saying that's the case, then I could go out here and get a trailer and I could build a hell of a sign, park it up there and what, what are y'all gonna say? I move it, bring it back? I mean, somebody, and I don't know who, but somebody were, were beaten to a different drum somewhere because the laws are already on the books. They were good for years and years in this historical area, bringing people down here to be historical. I, I can guarantee you, the people that come down here to eat at those diners and those restaurants, when they see food trucks down here, they're not saying this is the greatest town in the world. That's a slap in the face. Now, I know Nacogdoches has room big for it, but historical area, which I thought we were, I don't even know if we're historical or not, you know? That's why I wanted to find out before I come up here, but I'll, I'll find out the next time I come around. But, you know, there's got to be certain rules, like in Scottsdale, Arizona, allow certain things to keep it the western town, the oldest town, there's got to be something. And, you know, I don't know, the, don't we have a city manager or, or, what's your, Main Street manager? You know, you know, the, the communication between her and these businesses, it doesn't exist. So, the fire department guys, you're telling me sometimes they don't know events are going on till they block the door with, with, with boots. So, you know, if we gotta disconnect like that in the system, and then all of a sudden someone wants two hundred feet down to ten feet, I, I have a hard time with that. And, and I'm not saying the guys, whoever comes up here would be fantastic, they might be the best food in the world, but hey, outside, treat everybody the same, sign ordinance. And then I think someone really made me mad the other day, someone said, well, you wanna monopolize all the business downtown. And I, I took that offensive because, wait a minute, we got twenty buildings down here empty, if you wanna jump in there and, and go for it, go for it. But don't come up here and, and try to judge people, because these folks, they're not rich people. Hardworking, yes. Not for, you know, you're young, and I'm seventy-five, so therefore, my days of taking these chances are over with, but these kids are, they got the lifetime here. You know, I see something damage forty, fifty people's jobs, college kids, the SFA loves this place. Talk about SFA draw, you can't get in this place when mother-in-law or parent day up there, they have a place to go to. They're proud of, of Nacogdoches. When they come down here and see Indian food truck and Joe's Barbecues, food trucks parked in there, that's not an image you wanna have. Walmart up there with a library, I don't care where they put them, but don't bring them down to Red Brick Square. And use that for your own, but anyways, like I said, we don't need to be trendy like in Austin. Keep away from the trend, just keep it historical, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against? Okay, if not, is there anyone here that would like to speak in support or for these amendments, one or more of the amendments? Yes? Mrs. Gall, good evening.
So my name is Rebecca Gall, my address is eighty-four seventy-five FM two six oh nine in Nacogdoches. And thank you for allowing me to speak today. So, my husband and I, well, I grew up here and came back to Nacogdoches three years ago with the plans to open a business and raise my, raise our family here. So, my husband and I own Twigs and Tin, the gift shop on Main Street, and we are, will be opening Gall's Cafe directly across the street. So I'm also downtown almost every day, and, um, from a few different perspectives, one is a business owner, but also as someone downtown who likes to eat. And then from a third perspective, I'm, I'm a member of the Main Street Advisory Board and I'm very active on the Economic Vitality Committee. And really, our goal is to sustain and improve the economy of downtown Nacogdoches, which hopefully has a very positive impact on the rest of Nacogdoches, the city and the county as well. So, um, as far as the food trucks go, I really wanna speak first to the bigger picture, what, um, really from the Main Street Board and from a business owner and also just from my personal perspective, that what we need more of downtown are more food establishments, whether those are brick and mortar or whether those are food trucks that come and go. One of my business neighbors in the same building said to me, when I go to Lufkin, I go with my family to eat. I don't need to know where we're gonna eat, we just go to Lufkin because we know there are plenty of places to eat. And, over the last few years as a whole, foot traffic has picked up in downtown Nacogdoches, but when you talk to, um, some of the people downtown who have been downtown a long time, um, like the gift shop across, um, the street from us, you know, they report that there are less local people coming downtown. So, we want not only more tourists coming, with tourism being the number two industry in the state, but we also want more local people coming downtown. And I, one of the ways that you can get more people to come downtown is to have more food and beverage options, regardless of what type of, um, businesses those are. And so, whether it's a food truck or brick and mortar, if people think they have, know they have options to come downtown, they're more likely to come downtown. Likewise, for those of us who work downtown, and my understanding is there are over five hundred, estimated over five hundred employees in the immediate downtown area, many people like me don't bring their own lunch. We've got young kids, we've got a lot going on, I don't have time to worry with making my lunch. So I'm gonna eat, once I get to work, well, I also happen to be vegetarian, and I know we're somewhat in the minority, but that really limits, and I'm just using myself as an example, that really limits food options downtown. So while I do, you know, frequent the businesses downtown and I love the Fredonia and, you know, but I need something, um, you know, I, I need more choices. So many times I get in my car and I leave downtown and I go to Taco Bueno and get a bean burrito because it's vegetarian, so. And there are other people who are not vegetarian who also just want options, they order Jimmy John's or they go other places. And we would really like to see more of that being captured downtown. And the busier downtown looks, the more likely people are to stop and eat or shop and walk the streets. So, um, so I love the food trucks personally, I mean, Shawlee's Indian, she always has two vegetarian items on her menu, but there are people who just like variety, and so when Shawlee's food truck is out there or the Say Cheese's food truck, sorry Brendan's, I hear you're great, but I don't eat meat. Um, you know, I think that actually helps all of us. And there are people who I know come regularly to Brendan's just to eat his barbecue who wouldn't be downtown otherwise. And every time they drive through the streets, even if they're not stopping at Twigs and Tin or, um, Glass Castles or House Traditions, they're seeing those business names and its branding for all of us. So what helps, one of us helps all of us, um, and it helps, um, just bring, you know, more foot traffic downtown. Separate from that, as someone who has just gone through, I just looked back, it was February that we announced, February of two thousand eighteen, we announced that we were opening a coffee shop and cafe downtown because we had a potential location and there were other people also thinking about doing it. And we had said to these people, if you buy this building, we're committed to doing it. Well, if somebody was opening a coffee shop next door and they bought the building, we would have had to have backed out. So we committed knowing we didn't have a definite location. Fast forward to January two thousand nineteen, we were finally able to purchase a building and start renovations. That is how long it took to secure a location to even start on a cafe remodel. So, there were no other existing, you know, the only thing that came available in all that time is the former Liberty Bell that's now Cowboy Jack's, and we were like next on the list. And so we're very happy for Cowboy Jack's, I mean, they, you know, they had inquired about that a long time ago, but that left us continuing to search. And so finding locations, so there, you know, there are some, on the Economic Vitality Committee, we talked to food trucks and other businesses in Lufkin and different places, to say, hey, would you like a second location downtown? Or would you like to, if you're a food truck, would you like to open a brick and mortar spot downtown? And there has been some interest in that, but there aren't places ready to move into. And, um, you know, most people don't have the, you know, economic resources to be able to do what we're doing. And I'll be honest, it's a huge financial strain and a huge risk for us. So for a lot of these food trucks who maybe want to eventually have a, a, you know, brick and mortar restaurant, this is a, a good way for them to gain entrance. And kinda get some traction, save up some money and then, um, you know, and I don't know, I probably can't mention by name, but I know that at least two of the food trucks that come downtown are potentially interested in opening a brick and mortar food establishment downtown, so. That's really pretty much what I have to say.
Right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in supportive? Well, hi, Mrs. Willoughby, good to see you.
Good to see y'all. Ricky Lee Willoughby, thirty-four, twenty-two, we're gay. My husband and I own and operate Red House Winery, it's right over here. If anybody needs a glass of wine after this evening, we'll open it up. Cause we all might need one. But, um, just, just wanted to, you know, it, it seems like this whole big, you know, buzz about the food trucks and the ordinances and the two hundred feet, the ten feet, you know, it seems to have cast a negative light on, on the food trucks. And I can speak on behalf of myself and Jacob, we have nothing negative to say about food trucks. Everything has been positive. It's actually helped increase foot traffic to our business. Um, we've had Thursday nights where we've had live music and we've had a food truck, and we've had Thursday nights that outweigh our Friday and Saturday nights, which are our busiest nights. So those are wonderful nights for us. And not to mention the friendships that we formed with, with these guys, um, it's been, it's been a lot of fun. But I think, you know, putting them in the, the light that they've been kinda portrayed in this evening of, you know, trendy or, you know, kind of run-of-the-mill, fly-by-night, um, knowing these guys and what they've done, that's not, that's not what you've got in downtown Nacogdoches right now. Now, there may be somebody else that comes in two months from now that, that's what they are, and you're gonna have that, just like you have that with brick and mortar shops. But, these guys are vested in downtown, they spend a lot of money on these food trucks. Um, I do the insurance for some of them, so trust me, I know, they're not spending ten thousand dollars on, on a food truck trailer. They're spending fifty, seventy-five thousand, they're, they've got a lot at stake as well. And so to, to put them in, in a negative, you know, connotation or a negative light, I, I think is, is unfair and unfortunate. Um, because I think at the end of the day, the more traffic that we can get downtown Nacogdoches, the better. Um, I remember moving here, but, or moving back here from Nashville, you know, twelve or so years ago, thinking, Nacogdo, I mean, we're never gonna progress, you know, we're just gonna kinda be stuck here, but here we are, you know, twenty nineteen, and, and we're having a conversation about food trucks. I never in a million years thought that that would happen. So, I think, you know, it's good to, to get in here and talk and, and come up with ideas and, and figure out how we can all make this work for each other. I don't think it, it needs to be anything that anybody should be scared or worried about. I think it's something that, you know, we can all come to the table and, and figure out how to make it, how to make it work and be beneficial for everybody. And the start of that is understanding both sides. So, thank y'all for, for opening this up, for, for discussion this evening. Again, like I said, we, um, we love downtown Nacogdoches, I've been, I've lived here for thirty-four years now. And, um, and again, to see, to see where, where we've been and where we've come, you know, at the point that we've come to and, and where we're going from here is, is only a positive thing. Um, we just had a baby boy back in November, and so to know that things are, are moving forward, um, and know that, you know, we've got things going on downtown Nacogdoches. And here in Nacogdoches, for us to go and do things together as a family, um, you know, priorities change and, and, uh, and mindsets change, and, and so we're, we're lucky and grateful to, to have that, so. But, just really encourage everybody, you know, if you haven't tried the food, go try the food, it's wonderful. You know, we've, like I said, we, we welcome them with, with open arms, um, you know, by opening up our, our parking lot. And, um, and I think everybody, um, could really benefit from just getting to know these guys, um, and hearing, hearing their story. So, that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir?
How are you?
Good. Uh, my name is Brendan Todd, address is one oh one eight-three West Highway seven, um, Nacogdoches seven oh six one, I like this stuff. Uh, I am the owner of Brendan's Barbecue, and so I just wanna come up and just give a testament as to, you know, the, the food truck laws, how they changed, and how they've allowed me to be successful and grow. So I knew I wanted to own a food truck, I'm that young millennial guy. And the food trucks allow an opportunity and a stepping stone for an ultimate dream, which is to have a brick and mortar. So she said there's two people looking, I'm one of those people that are looking for a brick and mortar. But with the food truck laws before, my wife and I were sad because we realized we were gonna have to leave Nacogdoches, which we, we love our hometown. But when we found out it was changing, we were like, okay, wait a minute, now, now we can stay and call this home. Um, so we opened a food truck, and it's been extremely successful. We've had several businesses, um, even downtown, um, when they're opening, or even ones that existed, they would contact me, hey, can you please bring your food truck and set up in front of my shop because I want more traffic, we're having a special, we want food there. And tons we could do it. The beauty of it is also we get to partner with local businesses. So one is Nine Flags Coffee Shop, people come and they get brisket, hey, did you like that brisket? That recipe comes from Nine Flags Coffee Shop, go check them out, they go down the street. Same with Fredonia Brewery. I can see both of our sales are just booming because we're partnering with each other. Red House Winery is a place we call home, same there, they were a new business. And when people come to have wine, red wine, they want beef, so it worked out, we get to be barbecue and red wine. So, from, from our side, we get to contribute, um, to the growth in downtown Nacogdoches. I'm very proud that we were mentioned in Texas Monthly. Texas Monthly said, big title, oldest town in Nacogdoches now has food trucks. And we get people flying from out of state, people driving from Houston, they're my first customer, they're enjoying the food, and then they're going downtown and shopping. And they're coming, they're leaving their car, coming back, telling me how much they love the old brick road. It's just cool to see that we're contributing to that. It's just cool to see that we're contributing to that. Um, a little bit of transparency. My sales are up a hundred and thirty-five percent after one year. I never even knew that was attainable. Um, and that's just because of, of local people loving it, um, having a good product. But it's just publicity and, and tourism, we're tapping into that. Uh, I'm very happy to hear that people are coming here, um, to shop and then they are coming to Brendan's Barbecue, but that they're going and supporting other places. So in support of the two hundred foot rule, um, there's a flip side of it. So if I'm at Red House Winery and if Mr. Hoya sold his property and now it's a restaurant, well, I was there first. I've established the place home. Well, now I'm booted out because that's a brick and mortar. So for me, it, it is more fair. Um, there's, it does get away of the discrimination. Um, just to add comment, uh, taxes, I mean, we're transparent. I mean, investigate us. We, we get inspected more by the health inspector. And I'm not complaining about it. It makes me happy. Um, I'm hiring people. We're growing. So there's competition and I understand that. Um, but it's just not all negative. Where, where there's failing, there's also growth. And if we can partner together and grow, I mean, I see more of that than the latter. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to be more transparent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else here want to speak in support? Yes, sir.
My name is Baron McLemore, three nine five County Road, two oh eight seven five nine six five. Twenty-something years ago, my dad and I were kind of the cause of this, jumping off the bridge where there was no food trucks allowed. We had a local taco, taco truck that wanted to park at our place. And we all can research the history on that, that one person didn't like driving by it. So, but that being the case, it was a draw for our business. She then just took six or eight months, moved to the back side of our South Street store and has continued on to this day, still in the same manner, pretty much the same size, just a little bit larger than our food truck, but has a brick and mortar, or tin building now. Uh, I was not planning on speaking tonight. I was just coming to see what it was about. But after listening to this, uh, I'm thinking of it from a business landowner's perspective. Uh, I think by doing away with this rule, that would allow places that I have properties, if there happened to be a store beside it that's not mine, but yet I wanted to have Brendan or somebody come in and park on my property, I'm eliminated from doing that with the two hundred foot rule, if there's somebody there. So again, I like the idea. Uh, I think Jules made a case that it's, you know, I, I don't want to see the city in a bunch of litigation over it. So, um, I mean, and I like, I like food trucks. My son just finished six years in the Navy. Uh, he said that was his favorite place everywhere he went. He would go search out where all the locals were eating and eat there. I think, uh, as far as safety issues, if they, number one, if they provide a bad product and it makes people sick, they're not gonna be there. If it's not good food, people are not gonna be there. But it seems like where there are food trucks, there are more options for the local people, where, and I'm saying local, where they work in the area, to stay in town or stay by that and work. Yeah, I eat downtown every morning for breakfast. Uh, I like the idea of having more choices because as many of y'all know, my route is from east side to south side to west side, back to east side. So, uh, having more, more options down. And I'm not, I'm not just thinking about, I asked Chief Kiplinger if it was just about downtown. Uh, I like the idea of having, making sure that we can, as far as a business owner, if somebody came to me and said, hey, I'd like to put a s- s- food truck here, I don't have to worry about that range of where they can be or where they can't. So as far as rental income for a business owner or we talk about brick and mortar stores, that gives me another option to look at, uh, for something like that. So, sounds good.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
How are y'all?
Doing well.
My name is Chris and I reside in Tyler, Texas. I am the owner of Say Cheese Food Trucks. Probably Bostic, B-O-S-T-I-C-K. So you're probably asking what an out-of-towner is doing here. And, uh, I just wanted to come and kind of just share my story, uh, quickly. I know, you know, we've, we've got other things to, to get through today. But, um, you know, when, when we first started, uh, food trucking, I'm, I'm originally from Houston and, uh, went to this, the University of Alabama in Tuscaloosa. And we tried to start a food truck out there and, uh, we did. And then we brought that food truck here to Tyler, um, uh, with a church plant that happened in Tyler last year. And so business was great. We were, we were, we were moving right along. We're helping them, uh, helping Tyler kind of figure out rules. Being from Houston, my, my mother's also in the restaurant industry. So we, we kind of had a little bit of our hand in to, to how the rules were structured, things like that. And, and, and suddenly food trucks started coming. And, uh, now there's twelve in Tyler. And so we held, um, a food truck rally downtown Tyler. It was the first one. And, uh, businesses were scared and, you know, we, we were gonna take over the square, really. Um, and lo and behold, we had eight thousand people show up. And those eight thousand people all shopped in the local, um, town right there. Most of them had never even been to Tyler before, coming from Dallas. You know, most people leave Tyler to go to Dallas. But we were seeing the opposite. And, uh, so then we started growing and we decided to, to open a second truck. And the second truck was strictly for traveling. We noticed that we were getting calls from Dallas, Austin, Houston, Louisiana, Mississippi. And so there's not every day that you see, uh, you know, traveling, uh, cheese trucks. So we were getting a lot of calls. And so we were traveling, going all over the place. And then we, um, found ourselves here in Nacogdoches. I had met Brendan through Instagram and just wanted to, to set up a small little, uh, give back during the Christmas holidays. We wanted to give back to, uh, that community specifically. And so we were doing this all over, uh, in small towns where food trucks were, were getting started. And so we got here and we fell in love with the city. And, uh, so we, we, we thought about it, we prayed about it, and we moved, made steps into coming into the city. And I have to say, that has been the best experience that I've ever had. Uh, it, I mean, we've been everywhere in Texas and I, I've never felt, one, so welcome, uh, and two, so motivated to do good and, and, and really to, to come and stay in town, so much so that we've hired people to run the truck who live here and, and, and they're running the truck. Uh, they're running the truck right now as we speak, you know, local people who live here in downtown. And, and you know, there's a lot of talk about, uh, money and taxes and, and I second Brendan saying that, that we are very open and, and you know, we pay our taxes and, and it is an investment, you know. But food trucks started two thousand eight when the recession hit. Uh, restaurant entrepreneurs wanted a way to, you know, get into business. But with the, just the heavy load that opening a brick and mortar looks, um, or, or, or the heavy load that, that you face, they just started going into the trucks. And so two thousand eight, that's just a business boom. I mean, from, from two thousand eight to two thousand fifteen, it went from a hundred thousand dollar industry to a one point two billion dollar industry, uh, and then, then bringing life into local cities. And, and we've seen that here. I mean, when we set up downtown at the square, you know, and now for us, I mean, fifty to sixty people is a crazy day. You know, so it's not much, but we're seeing that, that live action come downtown and then setting up at the winery. You know, and I, I always tell everybody, you know, we don't want to cause any issue, you know, we want to add value. And, and that's, that's, that's really where this food truck stemmed from, is wanting to create community, wanting to give back to that community. How we do that is all of our credit card tips doesn't go to our employees. All our credit card tips goes to feeding people who need food. Um, so anybody can walk up to our truck who can't afford a meal or who hadn't eaten all day. And they can, they know that with Say Cheese, they can get a free meal any day, a- anytime. Uh, they don't even have to ask for it, you know, uh, they, they just come up, that, we've seen them before because they've come up before. And, and, and we're able to give that. And, and, you know, just, just wanting to say that, one, I, I really appreciate that y'all are having this conversation. And I would say instead of us, you know, kind of bunting heads on this, we can work together. I've seen it done in other cities. And Nacogdoches is a great place to, to, to start this and to, and to make it something really great to where we are all working together and at the same time bringing value back to the city, because that's ultimately what every food truck wants. The more value that we can bring, essentially our sales go up and there are more people around. Just like you've heard tonight, more people around and then the sales of those people come up. So thank y'all so much. I appreciate y'all having this conversation.
Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if not, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, we will ask Mr. Mantey and Mr. Davis to be in the hot seat to answer some questions uh, or have some clarifications, uh, from members of council and we will have our discussion. So, any questions?
I have questions, but I'm not sure that they can be answered within the confines of this agenda item.
Understood.
So when we get to that time, I, there's, there's a motion that I would like to make. But I'll, I'll let anyone else ask questions of, of Mr. Davis and Mr. Mantey at this point.
Okay, Mr. Moore?
Uh, I just, I just had one question. Is, will you check and see if it's a state regulation to require a commissary? Just curious about that requirement. And I'm not gonna ask more questions unless we're not going to, to table it and have a, some more thorough discussion at another time. I mean, um, I mean, we could talk about it a lot and this is an important issue to talk about. There's a lot of, I mean, the issues to me are, uh, you know, the health safety of a food truck versus a ordinance whose purpose it is to protect a business. And if we're talking about health safety, I'm off for that. If we have an ordinance to protect the business, then we probably shouldn't have that Walmart come in here. And so those are my issues, really. Health safety, absolutely. Protecting business, that's a little trickier. I'll just make that a solid statement.
Thank you. Did you find?
Just very briefly on the, on the state requirement of commissary, I, I have an idea, but I don't want to say that without taking a look to verify it. I can say within our ordinance, uh, that there is a commissary requirement.
In our ordinance, I know there is.
There are. And there were, and with regard to that, and I appreciate you bringing that up. It's a good ques- there were some questions, I think, that were posed earlier, um, about waste, certain, uh, trash, things like those. Those are addressed also, uh, within our existing ordinance. Um, actually, I think there's, um, there, there's actually a, a log that's to be kept of, of waste. I'm just looking at supply, cleaning, servicing, operations. Um, it goes on to talk about, uh, trash receptacles. That's another portion that has to be addressed, uh, within the, the ordinance. And once again, logs kept on this. Um, and it does go on another subpart under commissary. Again, thank you for bringing that up, uh, Councilmember Moore, dealing with liquid waste, uh, characterized by the food service. And it has to meet, uh, removal, disposal, treatment requirements, all those things. And it would have to pass muster with our sewer system if somebody, just as if a, a restaurant, brick and mortar, was gonna make some effort to dump it down the drain. You can't do that, nor could a, nor could a, uh, uh, mobile food unit do that.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Felder?
But taxes, uh, keep coming up in conversation as if we don't receive tax revenue at a food truck business.
Well, I, I did talk to the, our finance director on the taxes and she informed me that so far as they are registered with the states and they operate in Nacogdoches, then portions of their taxes will come to the cities that they operate in. So if they operate in Nacogdoches.
But you're saying they do pay.
They do pay taxes, yeah.
And the, uh, parking spots that they take up, are they have to pay a fee for that parking spot?
No, it's a, it's public parking. And, uh, I think our regulation says they cannot have more than three parking spaces. And we also have in our ordinance that they cannot be stationary at a point, uh, within a certain period of hours. So it's not paid, it's public parking. And so they can park there, but not more than three parking spaces.
So those people that's been fussing to me for parking in between the lines, out of the lines, I, I can call Jim and have him arrest it or something?
Let, let me just say this. I'm, uh, I'm not a frequent visitor, uh, to food trucks, but that's because I cook quite a bit. I, since I returned back to Nacogdoches, I, I do a lot of cooking. And when I do decide to go out, I like to go to a restaurant and sit down and relax and let them do the cooking. But with that being said, now, when I was in, like, working in Houston and Boston, the, the larger cities, it was time restraint. I mean, at lunchtime, if you're in a larger city, you don't have a distance to travel and then get food and then get back to work on time. So the food trucks became, uh, institution as to where you could get a quick meal and then back to work. And as, like El Paso now, you know, one of the problems they had with El Paso back in the day was the food trucks that came to El Paso were serving the same type of food that was already there at the brick and mortar restaurant. And, and that's where the really issue started with El Paso. But I'm, right now, I'm neither here nor there on the ordinance, but I understand both sides of it.
Certainly. I appreciate competition and I, I don't have any interest in making a decision out of fear. I am curious though, what have we seen in the outcomes of the lawsuits? Have, have there been quite a few of them that have actually gone through and we've seen the results of those? Are they split fifty-fifty or what does that look like?
It's a good question. And, and I can't speak to all the lawsuits across, uh, the nation. Um, as, as I believe council is aware, we, we have actually received correspondence. You know, this isn't a, um, imagined situation. We have received correspondence from a law firm that has brought these matters, um, across the, the nation. Um, I, with regard to, uh, places like Chicago, that's one of the, the places that faced one of these suits. They did litigate that. The city, um, their constitution is different than ours. Uh, there were some different issues there. Um, the outcome on that is on appeal, the last that I checked. Uh, with regard to El Paso, uh, it's come to Texas. With regard to El Paso, uh, that particular matter, I believe, was filed in federal court, uh, was litigated for some time. And then upon advice of, uh, their city count, their city attorney's office, uh, recognized that, uh, they did not see the merit in continuing that fight on the distance provision. The same was, uh, with San Antonio. I believe San Antonio, I have a copy of that case there. I can certainly get that. But I believe that was based on the, on the state constitutional provision that I cited, uh, just a few months ago. But it was the same, it was the same issue. It was the distance restriction. Um, and after, I think that was litigated for some time further and it was determined, uh, at some point during the course of that litigation that, uh, it would, it would be difficult to prevail, the city's restriction. Uh, with regard to, uh, you know, what does this boil down to on these issues? It, it comes down to, uh, a discussion. And I think Councilmember Moore mentioned it a minute ago. Um, are we basing that on, uh, a matter that comes from, that springs from our, our, uh, protection of the public, our police powers, health, uh, safety, morals, welfare in general? Or is it a protection of one business arguably over another? And that's the crux of the legal analysis, I think, that has been made with this litigation in Texas anyway. And that's where that determination has been a challenge to sustain by cities with regard to, is this based on a police power? Can, can we articulate that? Versus, is this protecting one business against another? And then we get into due process and due course of law issues, um, and, and in those matters. I hope that, I hope that, okay, yes, sir.
Can I ask you one question?
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, researching, I noticed like Boston, which is a historic city.
Yes, sir.
They, they, they didn't allow food trucks, et cetera, downtown. They allowed bars, but not food trucks. They built Faneuil Hall, which is, uh, restaurants, all types of restaurant.
Yes, sir.
That's where you ate during lunchtime.
Yes, sir.
Even if you were from Cambridge, you worked across the bridge. But I noticed that a lot of the older cities that base their, uh, you know, their, it wasn't based on growth, like Los Angeles, Chicago and all that. They had enough customers to satisfy every vendor that was set up, whether it's brick and mortar or whether it was a food truck. So it depends on the customer base in a lot of the cities compared to being a historic city.
That's, that's, that's a good point. And, and some cities, uh, will establish areas almost like a food truck court or, or, or area. We do, and you, you- We do, and you brought up a very good point a little bit ago, Councilmember Bolden, is there are, you know, somebody just can't park out in the middle of the street. There are, there is a provision under Section 18-59, Subpart 3(c), which does talk about the three parking spaces in the downtown district, but can't take any more than that. Certainly can't park in a fashion that would hinder traffic, block traffic, create a public safety issue or things of those types. There are, you know, some cities that address one parking area versus, or one parking space versus three, or some other matters as well.
And see, the only reason why I just mentioned that is you have a Brick and Mortar that is paying property taxes, et cetera, to sell their products. You have a food truck to come in and park free, you know. So, there's an advantage there. A lot of cost difference between Brick and Mortar and food truck vendors.
That's true.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
No.
Mr. Hands? Okay. Well, I respect and understand and sympathize with the points that were made by Mr. Guireman and the others that spoke that are part of their company. And I think more than anyone else up here, I do understand where they're coming from, having owned a restaurant for over 10 years, or the one downtown for over 10 years. And I was asked, you know, how would you feel if someone had a truck very near to you and was selling something that you sold? And I think that would have shaken me a little bit. But I would like to think that it would serve as a challenge to up my game, maybe provide with a little more ingenuity and challenges as far as keeping customers and gaining new And as a council, you know, or as a city, we have free enterprise here. We cannot take sides and protect Brick and Mortar stores or protect the food trucks. We have to look out for everyone. So, that's, I think, one of the things I would like to, after saying that, would encourage the Brick and Mortars, as well as the food trucks, to find some common ground, to find a way to be pleasant and to get along and to complement each other. Because as everyone learns eventually, if we help each other, we usually can all succeed to whatever our aspirations are, whatever we wanted to hope to accomplish. I'm also getting the impression that council is not ready to make a decision tonight on this. And so, I would like to maybe have a short discussion about tabling it with the idea that staff come back with some options. I would like for one of those options to be the idea of possibly, and this is just an idea that I had come up with, maybe taking, for health and safety reasons, taking the food trucks off the city streets, but making sure we provide room for them in our parking lots. So, downtown, that would be the parking lot, city parking lot behind City Hall, close to Festival Park. It would be the parking lot on the Mound Street in Maine. The brewery already has two spots for food trucks. We would also need a cutout or two at the library and the rec center. So, that's just one option to look at. And then I would hope that whatever options are looked at could be brought back to us within three months, hopefully sooner rather than later, so we could get this settled. Any discussion?
You must have been reading my mind.
Okay. Well, good. That's all right. So, but you did want to have some comments to make. So, you go right ahead.
Well, I have a lot of concerns with current ordinance. I have concerns with really just one portion of the proposed amendment. But obviously, there are a lot of issues that fall outside the realm of this agenda item and the proposed amendment to the ordinance that I think, in my opinion, might be better discussed in possibly workshop forum with council. Invite interested parties, affected parties, to come and provide perspective on both sides. And again, after allowing staff to do some more research and maybe provide a report at that workshop, have some open discussion about it, and then formulate amendments based on what we discover from more research, more talking to the interested parties, more research on our own if we choose to. It seems like rushing to make the amendment, I would rather, if we're going to amend the ordinance, I would rather do something that's a lasting amendment and something that we feel is equitable to all parties involved and something that we're not having to go back and revisit repeatedly because of a sort of reactionary issue.
And you want to look at more than what has been proposed here tonight?
Yes, yes. I would like to look at being a little more specific with the zoning. In some ways, I would like to look at some of the aesthetic concerns that have been raised, especially within historic overlays. I think there are a lot of other issues outside of this agenda item that should be discussed and decided on.
And you can share those with Mr. Manti?
Yes, absolutely.
Correct?
Sure.
Do you have any concerns or questions about us tabling this and asking for some additional input within that three-month timeframe?
There's one thing I left out. We sent out over 200 letters to every restaurant or food establishment in the city of Nacogdoches, and nobody responded in opposition of this ordinance. I just want you to know that every restaurant in the city received a letter. And so far, nobody called back or wrote a letter to us to oppose it. Per the AIS, we have four amendments. So, I just want to know from the city council, are we saying we want to revisit all the four amendments or their specifics? Because once we leave here, we'll probably want to start working on, bringing it back to the council. So, I want to know specifics. Are we saying all the four amendments?
Can we pick out amendments? Or since it's a single agenda item, since they've been lumped in one agenda item, I'm assuming we have to table the entire item?
I think since you want to visit more than one amendment, that, yes, we should table the whole.
It's really just one, it's the zoning amendment
Sure.
that I'm most concerned with. The others, personally, I don't have an issue with. But since it is all lumped together, I don't know that we can cherry-pick that one amendment out of the agenda item to table. Am I correct in that, Mr. Davis?
Probably be best just to table them all, and then we can address them all at the same time.
Okay.
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 Okay. Now, well, I want you to make the motion that we're going to table.
Well, I move that we table Agenda Item Number Five, pending some more research by staff. And I would propose that we have a public workshop to discuss this and invite food truck owners, restaurant owners, whoever would like to have some input on the issue, and see if we can find that middle ground, which I think a lot of people would like to find.
Within three months.
Within three months, yes.
I'll second that, Mr. Motion.
Okay. Any discussion?
So, based on this motion, the food truck owners who still operate as they do now with no restriction on anything?
I assume the amendment would stay as it is on the books right now until we revisit the item.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. So, is there any other discussion for the motion that's on the table? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Manti. Agenda Item Number Six, Consider a Resolution Calling for a Regular Election of City Council Members for the Northeast Ward, Northwest Ward, and the At-Large Mayor in and for the city of Nacogdoches, Texas. City Secretary Ms. Vincent.
Yay.
Oh, you get it all together. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jan Vincent. I'm your city secretary. Tonight on the agenda, I am asking for approval of a resolution calling the regular election of City Council Northeast Ward Council Member, Northwest Ward Council Member, and At-Large Mayor. The election is set for May the 4th, 2019. We are accepting, I am accepting, application for place on the ballot, started January the 16th, and will end February 15th. We will, again, we plan to contract with Nacogdoches County Elections Office to administer our election. Early voting is May 22nd through, I'm sorry, April 22nd through April 26th, and April 29th, and April the 30th. Mine was not near as exciting as the last one. That's quite all right.
I disagree.
So, I just need approval of the resolution, Mayor. Okay. So, we need a motion for a resolution calling for the election.
Motion approved.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved and seconded for Agenda Item Number Six. Any further discussion? Not. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Seven, Receive Annual Report from the Public Library. Good evening, Mrs. Franks.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Councilwoman. My name is Mercedes Franks. I am your library director, and I'm pleased to give you a summary of all of our events that took place in the fiscal year 1718. Very briefly, we're a typical library. We have 104,000 items in our collection. We're very excited that this year, we were able to start a collection called Library of Things. And as many libraries across the country, we're offering non-traditional library materials such as STEAM backpacks that can check out. We're working with our schools to check out STEAM kits that can be used in classrooms. We're also checking out seeds from our seed library, planning to check out items for gardeners, just all sorts of little things that one only needs once in a while. And we're doing that not just to offer something different, but also to be a place where people come and gather and meet other people, and just with the idea that sharing resources rather than individual expenses. We're also very excited that our digital collection, which we started in 2013, March of 2013, has increased both as far as the number of items that we have purchased, but also the usage. We currently have 13,738 uses in the fiscal year of 1718, which is an increase of about 2,000 from the previous year, something like that. I really can't remember. But we are pleased with the usage. All the things that we do at the library, whether it's the programs that we do or the outreach, that's all done by a staff of eight people. We have three full-time people. One of them is a program coordinator, Mike Moore, who does an excellent job of going to schools. He works very closely with all the elementary schools, but he does gardening programs there. He also takes STEAM backpacks and the kits, provides training for the teachers, and he's an excellent liaison for some of the outdoor programs at the university. And then, of course, our assistant director, Crystal Hicks, she does, she's excellent at grant writing, has put on many adult programs and kids' programs. And the number of programs that we're offering has increased tremendously over the past few years because we have such a dedicated staff. And so, that's just a picture of us having a fun day at the library. We are open six days a week, and we're very happy that we have staff that's very receptive to offering these types of programs. We are a busy location. Every single day, you'll see people waiting to come into the doors, and almost any time of the day, you'll see lots of people doing various things at the library. One of our busy areas are the computer stations. We have 21 public computers. As you can see, we had 32,026 sessions last year. And that's an important figure to know because we are the only place that somebody that doesn't have a computer could come and use a computer for job applications, applying for social service programs, for taking classes, any of the things that you do with a computer. We're the only place that offers that, the usage free of charge. And for many people, that's a lifeline to better economic stability. So, we are happy to have that. And we're also happy that we have staff that are willing and able to help people because it's not just having the access to the technology, but having someone there to assist you with getting on the computer and teaching you how to navigate the computer. So, that is something that we do quite a bit of at the library. We are very pleased to announce that we have really worked hard on researching grants and going after several different grants. These are the grants that we received last year. Texas Book Festival, we've received that. This is the third year that we received it, and I just recently submitted an application for another grant. So, that went toward our e-audiobooks and graphic novels. The ALSC Dollar General Grant was a national grant that we were awarded for the purchase of STEAM kits to form partnerships with after-school programs and church programs in schools to provide those STEAM activities to teachers and to students. And then, the one that we're very, very excited about, I'm sure you heard a lot of publicity about it, was the NEA Big Read Grant. We were one of 55 entities in the country to receive that. And we were awarded that grant in large part to our success in the One Book One City that we had done in October 2017. And we were able to demonstrate that we could put on a big program like that, and so we were awarded the grant last year. And we're hoping to be awarded again this year. We've recently submitted our application for another grant. So, that was $13,000 for that grant. And then, just a little bit of the things that we did at the Big Read Nacogdoches, we had, as you see, 46 programs in 31 days, and so that took a lot of effort on the staff. But also, we worked with a lot of community partners, a lot of businesses wanted to partner with us. They saw what we did the year before, and they wanted us to come and do programs with them. We also, this is one activity that we did at the airport. And so, most of our activities, we did in conjunction with other city departments. This happened to be the airport. The parts department came the day before and mowed the area, so it'd be nice for our event. We had other activities out here, and we had the police department provide volunteers, assert volunteers. We did a campout at Festival Park. The recreation center helps us a lot, historic sites. So, it's been us leading it, but with the help of a lot of other city organizations and city departments helping us. So, we're very pleased that we did so many different programs in such a short period of time. And as I mentioned earlier, our, the number of programs that we have done were increasing as well as the scope of programs. We're trying to make sure that we go out into the community as much as possible because we realize that not everybody can come to the library. And it's just a part of bringing the community together more. And then, this is one activity that we recently became involved with. The Dia de los Muertos, we just celebrated the sixth annual event. This is the second year that the library has been involved in this, and we were very happy that we had people from all over the area come to the event, vendors, and just a lot of participation. And we're planning on doing it again this coming year. So, there's a picture of some of the festivities. And again, with the assistance of And again, with the assistance of several different departments, we were able to put this on. As I mentioned, we do work with our schools. We try to go to as many community events at the schools as possible, as well as meet the teacher nights. Any celebration or event that we are asked to participate in, we do our best to attend because we think it's just important to be part of the community and to give back. And there's a big boa constrictor there. This year, we are planning to be as busy, a little bit busier probably. We're very excited about, we're researching lots of different grants. So always on the lookout for different grants. One of the new things that we are doing is we have partnered with the School of Social Work, and we just had, just today, as a matter of fact, our social work intern started. And so we will have a social worker in our library, a student, helping people with a lot of the things that we see that people need help with. We've said for many years that as a staff, sometimes we are almost like social workers, and it'll be nice now to have an actual social worker there, a student. And part of her activities will be not just identifying people that might have needs for further social services, but also to do some research as far as libraries and social workers. But also, we are one of the few rural libraries that have social workers, and so we're hoping to be part of that, that research that she does. So we're very excited about that. Another thing that happened just last week, we are now partnering with the SFA Marketing Department. One of the professors approached us about them doing, two of her classes doing a marketing plan for some of our social, for some of our library services. And we're very excited. We identified the ebook collection as one area that we would like to have a marketing plan, and then our library of things. And so we're very excited about that because I've done a presentation with them, and so the students learned about the library, some of them had never been there. And it'll be just a wonderful collaboration to be able to get a finished product from them to see what we could do to improve our services. So we are busy and hope to continue to be busy. Any questions?
You are very busy.
I'd just like to thank, you know, our mission team. They always ask me, when we're going back to the library? I mean, they really like doing the further functions.
Thank you.
Of course, they are senior citizens.
That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all that you and your staff do. And I say that not just because my daughter is a frequent visitor, but I really believe in the critical importance of having a strong public library in the community.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think it's always so impressive to see what you and your staff come up with. You know, libraries are so challenged now, and you just all seem to fill that void so well, and so surprising, the things you come up with. So, thank you. And please extend our thanks to your staff.
I certainly will. Yes, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Are we having executive session this evening? No executive session? Okay. Well, then, the meeting for February 5th, 2019 is adjourned. Thank you for your attendance.